My pleasure to call to order the 5 o'clock Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting of June 9, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Marigo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome. Is there anyone here who wants to make a public comment specifically related to the Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting? This is not our regular meeting. Seeing none, we'll just move on then to our city manager. Mr. Clegg?
Mayor and council, just by way of a little bit of background, this Public Benefit Corporation constitutes the city council. It was formed for distinct purposes of public benefit, and so it has a slightly different role than the regular business of the city council. But it is constituted, the board of that corporation is the city council. As a matter of oversight, this group is supposed to meet every year. We have not met in recent years. We discovered that oversight, and so we're reconvening the Public Benefit Corporation for the first time since 2018. And we don't have any business items, any action items to bring to that board tonight, other than to adopt the minutes back from the 2018 meeting. And again, we have an expectation that this group at least meets once a year. This would meet that expectation, and we'll see if there's other business by next year's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Vice Mayor?
Motion to adopt the minutes.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The item is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And so that is all the business we have for the Public Benefit Corporation meeting, and it stands-
Excuse me, Mayor. I had a request.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't see any signal, but Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When we formed this Public Benefit Corporation, the expectation was that we were going to borrow 200-plus million dollars, and we did not have to. And that was for the Centennial Corridor and all the TRIP projects. Congressman Thomas got the initial money, and we thought that we would have to borrow a sizable amount. But with the continuing work of Congressman Thomas and Kern Cog and federal and state monies, we were able to complete all those projects without any borrowing. And just last week, we got notified that we received another almost $40 million to complete the final connections, what's called the Seventh and Eighth Movements, between '99 and '58. So a big hurrah for a $1.4 billion project that the city of Bakersfield was able to do without any borrowing, and most of the money coming from Congressman Thomas. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith, and thank you for your efforts on Kern Cog. And thank you to Councilmember Thomas. I don't see any other requests for comments, so we stand adjourned with the Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting at 5:10. And we'll start our regular meeting at 5:15.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the county of Kern, and the city of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call the city to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of July 9, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Marigo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome. Glad to have you here. And I know we have a student from Bakersfield College, so thank you for participating in the process. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Reverend Joe Baca, who is the Bakersfield Fire Department Chaplain, lead us in the invocation. Thank you so much for your service as chaplain for the last three years and then serving as a firefighter EMT with the Orange County Fire Department. Following the invocation, we'll have John O., who's a senior at Centennial High School, to lead us in the pledge. Now get ready for a very lengthy list of accomplishments. John is the city hall intern for our Economic and Community Development Department. He's a youth commissioner for Ward 6, a four-dimension member, and that's a big deal there. ASB treasurer, board advisor for the Interact Club, and president of the Chemistry Club. He also is with the Science, Spanish, and National Honor Society with a 4.3 GPA. He plays the violin with the Bakersfield Youth Symphony. He competes in robotics. And in his free time, and I can't believe you have any of that, John, John enjoys learning the drums, playing tennis, and reading. It's our privilege to have both of you here. Please stand.
As Her Honor the Mayor stated, my name is Father Joe Baca. I'm a priest to the diocese of Fresno. I've stood over 23 years. And I worked also, coming from Orange County, I worked at Disneyland for several years, and Orange County Fire Authority for six and a half years as firefighter EMT. But I'm very happy, very honored to be here. No, you might have left already. But anyways, but he told me to go ahead and give the invocation in Latin, everyone, and I'm just teasing. So I'll go ahead and start. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. We gather here today mindful of God's presence and grace. We thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon our city and its people. We ask for your divine wisdom and guidance to be upon our city council as they make decisions that will impact our community. May their deliberations be guided by justice, fairness, and a commitment to the common good. Grant them the strength and discernment to serve with integrity and compassion. We all, we ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting our nation's Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Father, thank you for your service. John, thank you also for your service, and better go and study some more. Congratulations on all your accomplishments. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, and outbursts from the audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Public statements. In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are received at different times. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statement. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Marigo, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items not on the agenda, nor have we received any speaker cards for items on the agenda.
Thank you. So now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar, items 7A through 7I. Staff memorandums were received for item 7E9, transmitting the signed agreement, for 7F3, pulling the item from tonight's agenda, and 7L4, transmitting the signed change order.
Thank you. And I see that Councilmember Gonzalez has requested that 7E3 and 7I3 be pulled. So now, Vice Mayor, is there anyone else who wants to pull anything or to recuse themselves? Seeing none, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the items pulled.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The item is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Gonzalez, 7E3.
Thank you, Mayor. 7E3 is an agreement with the Bakersfield Senior Center for Community Engagement Planning. This is part of the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. Actually, items 7E3 through 7E8 are all related to the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. In 2023, the city of Bakersfield was awarded a grant, a major grant, from the state of California in partnership with many community leaders and community stakeholders. We were awarded $22.1 million to invest in southeast Bakersfield and started this collaborative called Southeast Strong. I'm very proud of the work that the community has done and all of the effort throughout the years to see us get to this point. So this is a very historic moment for the city of Bakersfield and for southeast Bakersfield. And it's actually fitting. Yesterday, I had a moment, just a few moments, to visit with former councilwoman Irma Carson, who represented this area for quite some time on the Bakersfield City Council. And she's now 90 years old. And so I had a good, sweet moment to share with all of the work that she had done and efforts that she led throughout the years to revitalize southeast Bakersfield. And it's just wonderful that so many of us in the community are working to continue to push towards that direction. So I just wanted to ask, because there are a number of agreements tonight, and I'm sorry for calling out 7E3, but, Mr. Clegg, can you just describe to us that, you know, these agreements come in the context of a much larger plan and initiative that's already been established, and there'll be much more work in the future, many more agreements in the future as well? Can you just help us on the diocese and also in the community, understand what exactly we're doing?
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor and council, there are several items on tonight's agenda. Your next meeting will have additional items that are very similar. But taking a step back to look at the big picture and the history of this project, the very nature of the TCC project is to be one of collaboration and one of community ownership and community engagement. And so not only did we also have those same values that we wanted to go into this project as a city, but it's one of the requirements of the grant itself, that you have a very robust community engagement plan. And so we've developed a community engagement plan that will offer funding, and again, these are part of the grant requirements, to establish multiple entities that can really represent community interests, as well as serve the community in a variety of ways. And so there's this broader community engagement plan that was established as part of the grant, and we have more than a dozen different entities that will be providing services or doing engagement with the community. And again, the intent is to have much broader community ownership, have the solutions and the projects be things the community has asked for, but then also ask the community to roll up their sleeves and pitch in and do good work. And we have so many great partners that really not only improved our grant application, but also really, I think, improved our coordinated approach that I think led to the success in the second round. We were unsuccessful in our first application. We were successful in the second application because it was much more community-driven and much more community-owned. And so this community engagement plan reflects the many stakeholders and folks who have been doing the work and who are going to continue doing the work.
Wonderful. I just want to recognize also Ms. Empress, who was one of our strongest community leaders, Dr. Evelyn Young Spag, who's also here this evening. Thank you both for your leadership and all the hours that you've contributed to all of this effort. This is certainly monumental. I do want to touch on one other issue. We received, in addition to that, an award from the federal government for $20 million called the Community Change Grant. And this was for specific improvements that were really important to me, particularly improvements related to P Street, enhanced street lighting and walkability. And I have to show the story. When I first took over this particular area after redistricting, I walked down Q Street, all the way Q, crossed California, then walked all the way down P, me and my little dog, walked all the way down to Brundage, went down Brundage and walked up Chester, at night. Q, wonderfully lit, beautiful. Because of redevelopment, the city made all these investments to improve this street. Once you cross California, pitch dark. I saw so many families come home at night as I was walking through, getting into their homes, pitch dark. I saw a woman holding her groceries, trying to walk to her home in the dark. Saw a person in a wheelchair crossing the street in the dark, way too dark. We have to, we have to improve the street lighting in that area. This grant would help us do that. I understand that there's some issues with the current grant. Can you give the council an update on that, please, Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Mayor and council, this was a federal grant that came from the EPA that did include multiple road improvements, multiple street light and other infrastructure improvements, and it also included funding that would supplement some of the same projects that were in the TCC program, including weatherization of homes and providing energy assistance to homes. This grant, earlier in this calendar year, we received notice from the federal government that they were considering, of course, impacting and changing a multitude of grants. This was one of those that are on the list. And then a little over a month ago, I would say maybe two months ago, we received a notice that they had unilaterally changed some of the language in the grant and had given us notice that the grant was up for termination. There's a process by which we could protest that, which we have. We have protested that the grant conditions shouldn't or can't be changed without mutual consent of all of the parties. We'd already had a signed agreement with the federal government. And then we're going through that protest process to challenge the fact that, you know, we are prepared to move forward and deliver on the deliverables of that grant and benefit the community through that grant.
So we had a contract that was signed-
Correct.
-with the federal government, and the dollars have then, or the contract has been canceled?
That's correct.
Okay. And so we're continuing, we're currently in the process of challenging-
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember, when Steph and I were in DC, we met with our congressional and senate representatives on this issue, and we've also received some further advice as to how to appeal.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mayor. Then, there's no other comments or questions. For me, I'll make a motion to approve 7E3.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now 7I3, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. 7I3 tonight is related to BLNC and the funding to extend the expanded operations that we have approved in the past. We expanded the shelter space from the original number of beds of 150. We actually expanded it twice. It now sits at a total of 318 beds, which I have supported and advocated for in order for us to address the homelessness crisis. And I will say, you know, the point in time count has indicated that the number of unsheltered people has actually been reduced by 10 and 1/2% year over year. And I think it has to do in large part to the number of beds that we have created over the last few years. So I want to commend all of our service providers, certainly Mercy House, BLNC, Flood Ministries, and so many folks in City Hall who are working very, very hard. My question here is this. As we look at future extensions, when is it appropriate for us to begin analyzing the same service level, you know, to continue the same service level, or perhaps consider a reduction in the number of beds over time? If we are, you know, seeing some progress out there in actually addressing homelessness, it would seem prudent for us to have an honest conversation about when do we start scaling down the number of beds and the capacity at BLNC, so that we can then, in turn, save some dollars and reallocate to other pressing priorities?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Mayor and council, for the first few years that BLNC was in operations, I think there was a general recognition across, you know, many of our partners, that there was a significant gap in our ability to provide emergency sheltering as well as transitional housing and permanent housing. I think the appropriate time is when we're able to start bringing online more of our affordable housing units, permanent supportive housing units. And as this council knows well, you started almost five years ago with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, putting aside large amounts of funding to help leverage other funding sources to build affordable housing. And so, you know, as of four, you know, and three and four years ago, we started putting hundreds of units into the pipeline, but it takes many years to build those units. The good news is, last year, to some degree, and this year, to an increasing degree, those units are coming online. And so we're starting to see not just, you know, a couple dozen units, but we're starting to see 50, 100, 150 units come online, and we still have more of those in the pipeline. So I do think in this coming year is an appropriate time to start evaluating how many turnaways do we have to our shelter, how many housing units have opened up, and starting to look at, you know, when is the time that we can focus more on the long-term strategies as opposed to this more emergency strategy? I think it's in the next year or two.
Great. And, you know, I'd like to reiterate what I've brought up at the Homelessness Committee, in that what I'd like us to see is us establish a sort of five-year forecast and plan as it relates to, you know, the number of affordable housing units that we know will come online, and we know what the, you know, what the inflow is, what the trends are suggesting, so that we can better prepare for the future, and also signal to, you know, Mercy House and to the service providers at BLNC, our plans in the future to either reduce the number of beds or to remain stable. But I think we have to do this responsibly, and we have to have a multi-year plan of how we kind of reduce the number of beds and the services that we're providing there. Thank you so much. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no, and Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And just for clarification for the media, in case you're writing down that number of reduced, of the unsheltered homelessness, the point in time count compared from 2024 to '25 was 10.2%. Just, it's close, but we're celebrating that it did go down. It's really a good thing.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize.
No, no, no. Just wanted to make sure in case Pete writes it down.
Got it. Thank you so much for that.
Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment. It occurs to me, as we talk about BLNC and also the freeway wrapping up, how the city's addressed different problems over the years that come up, and historically, the city was not involved in, and got involved in, in order to solve constituent desires. I think way back in the 1970s, the city was proactive in the water rights and purchasing the rights to the Kern River in order to have a water source for the city. And, you know, we'd never been in the water business before, but we got in the water business. And with that purchase, we also got into the domestic water business that came with it and operating the river. And then we'd never been in building the freeway business before, and we got in the building the freeway, and we actually were the lead agency on that. And it was a big project over a lot of years and very successful to the city. And we just talked about the BLNC, and definitely, we were never in the housing homeless business before, but it was definitely a concern of the constituents. And we got in there and did it, and we seemed to be making progress. And hopefully, we can continue to make progress and change lives and also reduce the amount in the future. So I just think that we got some real wins and appreciate the work.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak. So the meeting stands adjourned at 5:39. And to our young man from Bakersfield College, our renegade, this is going to be a very, very short meeting for your report. It's typically not nearly this short. So you might want to come back for Professor Holmes. not nearly this short. So you might want to come back for Professor Holmes.